Good evening. It's 7:00 PM, April 3rd, 2025. I'd like to convene the Select Board meeting for this evening. Please be reminded that we are being televised and recorded by Sandwich Community Television. Let's stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is anyone here for public forum? You have to come up to the microphone, ma'am, and state your name and address and make certain that the microphone is on. It should be green. Well, sit down. You've got to speak into the microphone, please, so you can be heard by Sandwich Television. Oh, well, you can wait until they make their presentation. Not a problem. Your interest is appreciated. Review and approval of minutes.
Make a motion. We approve of the minutes of March 27th, 2025.
Second.
Motion by Mr. George, second by Mr. Hockter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes. 301. Thank you. Town manager report.
Thank you. Just a few updates tonight. In terms of upcoming meetings, our next meeting is next Thursday, April 10th. And also, I know town moderator Sean Roush is looking at doing an outreach session just about town meeting to help inform the public, talk a little bit about process, not really the details of this town meeting warrant, but just the process in general. And I believe that's going to be, I thought, I think he settled on April 15th at 5:00, but I will double-check that and I'll let you know next week. In two weeks from next week, which is the board's meeting after that, I know the board talked about a meeting earlier that night at 5:00, so we've already run some public hearing notices earlier in the night. So, wanted to assure you about that, that we're all set. Couple of other quick ones. On short notice, we received word that the Committee on Environment and Natural Resources is going to hold a hearing on our special act related to wastewater with our four neighboring towns and Joint Base Cape Cod. And that's next Tuesday, the 8th, at 1:00. So I think Heather's going to appear at that remotely. And then, we were asked to submit something in writing, so I quickly put this together today. You guys have heard it all so many times, so I just, but I wanted you to have a copy of it because we really had to do that fairly quickly. So, that went in today. Made sure the right people got it. And so, it's really just going through the normal state process. And as the board remembers, the exact same bill was submitted previously, was recommended out of this very same committee, eventually made it to the Committee on Third Reading, and it never progressed past that before the legislative session ended. So then it was resubmitted earlier into the new legislative session. So hopefully, we can try to push that through or, you know, if it gets referred out positively, which it should, because the committee referred the same exact language positively previously. So we'll see how that goes. As you all know, the wastewater is a never-ending exercise. Couple of other things to update on. I know we take it for granted with the minutes each week, and I just wanted to thank Sue James. It's a, I don't know why anyone would want to take minutes at night meetings. Over the years, like, it's been harder and harder to get town staff to want to take minutes at night, even though we pay like a premium for it in the sense of a guaranteed number of hours. So I dread the day when Sue says, "I think I'm done. Good luck." And my only hope then is that there'll be some sort of AI and there'll be some, like, I don't know, digital recording device, which there probably already is, that could transpose them because it's a common theme that I hear across towns everywhere. And I know, I know of a couple of Cape towns that literally contract with companies in Florida and Texas who do their minutes. It's that difficult to find someone, but just wanted to thank Sue because it's a tough job. And I think almost everything else that I would want to talk about is on the agenda later tonight. That's about it.
Okay. Correspondence, statements, and announcements. Got a couple of quick ones, please. And specifically, if I may, for Mr. Hockter, would like to share some information with the Sandwich Commission on Disability, which met April 2nd. The State Representative John Marcy has been named to the Massachusetts Commission on the Status of Persons with Disabilities. Certainly Representative Marcy has background qualifications and is open to outreach from commissions such as ours. Representative Exaros could be accessed to facilitate as necessary. And then, earlier today, Mr. Dunham, town planner Stephen Tucker, and myself met with Mr. Dufany's civics class at the middle high school. The students were very receptive and the interaction was good. And then, if I may, we have some very good news to share with the public tonight. The United States Bankruptcy Court for the District of Massachusetts has issued an order authorizing and approving the sale of 86 and a half acres of undeveloped land encompassing three properties on Discovery Hill Road and Kia's Way to the town of Sandwich. The town will purchase the properties for 3.3 million, which will be paid with funds allocated by town meeting through the town's Wastewater Infrastructure Investment Fund, the WIF. As a reminder, acquisition of real property is an expressly allowed use of the WIF fund, and therefore, an additional town meeting vote will not be needed to proceed with the transaction. In addition, the town will receive approximately $400,000 in back taxes owed on the property. The property acquisition represents a significant milestone for the town of Sandwich. If needed, the town will now have sufficient land to meet 100% of the total projected wastewater volume from all phases of its Comprehensive Water Resources Management Plan, the CWRMP, with significant acreage set aside for environmental purposes as well. We look forward to finalizing the sale within the next two weeks, and we'll have additional information available at that time. Move on to our first staff meeting. The Sandwich Select Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, April 3rd, 2025, at 7:05 PM in Historic Town Hall Auditorium, 130 Main Street, Sandwich, Mass. 02563, upon the petition of N-Star Electric Company, Doing Business as Ever Source Energy, to request permission to locate and relocate poles, wires, cables, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures to be owned and used in common by your petitioners along and across the service road public way or ways for that one fully-owned pole, 336/133A Alpha, Plan Number 19943318. Anyone wishing to be heard will be afforded an opportunity at that time. Motion to open the public hearing, please.
Make a motion. We open the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I'm sorry, the motion was by Mr. George and seconded by Mr. Hockter, and the vote was unanimous. Yes, ma'am? Excuse me. Is the green light on?
Okay. There you go.
There you go. Thank you very much. Any questions? Anyone from the public have a comment? So, no. There's no public comment? Okay. Motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion. We close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Do we have a motion on the request?
Yep. Make a motion. N-Star Electric Company, DBA, Ever Source Energy, permission to install one fully-owned pole, across the service road public way, Plan Number 19943318.
Second.
Motion by Mr. George, second by Mr. Hockter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Thank you. Do as well. Thanks very much. Safe travels. Okay. In accordance with Town Charter Section 7.3B, the Sandwich Select Board will hold a public hearing Thursday, April 3rd, 2025, at 7:15 PM in the Historic Sandwich Town Hall Auditorium, 130 Main Street, Sandwich, Massachusetts, on the proposed fiscal year 26 budget for town meeting. Anyone wishing to be heard on the subject will be afforded an opportunity at that time. Motion to open the public hearing?
Make a motion. We open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Mr. George, second by Mr. Hockter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Does anyone from the public have any comment? Questions?
All right, so just as a quick overview on the budget, similar to what we've been speaking about for several months at the Select Board and Finance Committee meetings, projected on the screen is the one-page summary of the overall budget. So I thought I'd just point out a few things. One of the things we're all used to is that this budget is predicated upon some of the state numbers that we received when the governor's budget was presented at the end of January. Typically, by now or within the next week, we would hear from the House, and we haven't, you know, heard anything yet about their cherry-sheep figures, either in our receipts or our assessments. So, we're anxiously awaiting that. We feel like we've been very careful with our projections that are shown on this page, that we should be fine. But, you know, until you find better information from the state, you really don't know. And I know the Select Board especially is used to hearing this. The state won't finalize its budget numbers until, most likely, July, well after we voted a town meeting. So a couple of things I wanted to point out on this page. If you look at the bottom right on the total estimated expenses that are included in this budget, it's just over $103 million. When you compare that number to last year's that we voted in May at the same exact time, it's an increase of 2.73%. So a lot of times, I know, we talk about percentages for certain budget accounts or certain segments of the budget, but I think it's really important to realize that, you know, full budget this year versus full budget last year is less than a 3% increase. When you look at the amount that is proposed to come from taxes, and on this same page, if you look at the upper left where it talks about the tax levy and there's the number, in this year, it's just over $81.7 million. If you compare that number to last year, it's a difference of about 3.5%, which when you look at the actual difference, the total value of the town and the average home value, which is at $717,300, the difference year-to-year compared to FY '25 is an average of $266 for the average-valued home. So I know sometimes we bandy about what sounds like much bigger numbers in terms of percentages when we talk about individual budgets, but when you look at the overall budget that we're presenting and what's coming from taxes, it's very much within the amounts that we're legally allowed to charge and in fact, doesn't charge people for over $3 million of what we could charge just with a vote at town meeting. I know there were a couple of issues that came up at Finance Committee meetings, and I had queued up some of the historic data, if anyone's interested. I was thinking there might be questions tonight. I don't know if you want me to touch on a few of those or just, I think it might be helpful. So I'm just going to touch on some of the issues that came up, again, at Finance Committee meetings. And I can make, I can make the projection on the screen bigger if it's hard for people to see, just so I can explain where this comes from. In the budget binders and on the budget information that's on the town's website, there's one document called the Financial Database that literally has almost 25 years' worth of data on probably 40 different categories of funding. And typically, because it's overwhelming to see the 25 years, we, in the printed version, give the last five years. But if you click on the spreadsheet and unhide the cells, the 20-plus years pops up. So there were a couple of things that came up that I thought the board would be interested in. And again, these came from discussions at a lot of the Finance Committee meetings this year. So I thought I would just go in order, so if you give me a sec. This is the capital budget. And I know it's sort of a constant tug and pull about how much we can afford each year. But I think what jumps out at me when I look at this, you know, as recently as, you know, 2012, which was, well, a little more than a dozen years ago, like, we weren't even coming close to appropriating $1 million a year. Since then, we've appropriated at least $1 million a year with many years, you know, doing a significant amount. I think the biggest was when we did a couple of those capital outlay expenditure exclusions. Those are one-time votes that the public approves, where we could charge it, for example, we did two of those for road improvements. Probably the biggest one we did, which wasn't an outlay exclusion, it just came from funds that we had available, was when we bought 100 Route 6A and made those improvements. But what I think what jumps out, I know there was some question about the amount of capital that was being spent for the year that we're proposing next year. You know, it's, when you add in the 1.2 million for this building from CPA funds, it's over $2.75 million, which is significantly more than last year. Then when you look at those same numbers and look at what we've tried to add to the DPW operating budget for their public infrastructure, as the board knows, the town approved an additional $650,000 for each of the last three years. And this year, our big budget initiative is to add another $560 to that amount, so another 1.2 million. When you look at that, we're a hair under $4 million that we're appropriating for capital. So I think in many ways, we've never been appropriating this much for capital. And you look at some of the things that we're doing with money and operating budgets, it's accomplishing some of the things we used to do through capital. Another great example is we added $60,000 to the Public Facilities Department budget operating, so they would have more money to make those repairs and improvements that the Select Board and Finance Committee talk a lot about.
Hey Bud, can you just, just for the people listening at home, can you just explain what, like, we all know what it is, but when you say that we're appropriating more money into the capital budget, what does that actually mean for the tax?
Yes, so this year, 100% of the capital that we're appropriating is coming either from free cash or from the Community Preservation Act fund. So nothing's coming from taxes. And I think that's important. If you look historically, almost all of our funding in normal years comes from free cash. A lot of people say that's an oxymoron, free cash, and it's a state term. The easiest way I could explain it is whatever you budgeted for a fiscal year, when you actually closed the fiscal year, paid all your bills, brought in all the money from different sources, what's the difference between when you closed your books and when you started, you know, when you started the year? And when you compare those numbers, that's sort of what free cash is. And what's nice about it is you can then use that the following year, most of the time for capital expenses. We use a little bit for operating, but I would contend that a lot of what we use for operating is really for things we used to fund in capital. Another topic that came up a few times, and I'm just going to show three more of these. A lot of people were questioning our debt. So, again, this opens up historically. So if you look back from, to fiscal year 2002, which, just to put things into perspective, in 1990, the town of Sandwich, not percentage-wise, but in terms of actual debt, was second only behind the city of Springfield in authorized debt. And that was when we had authorized building Oak Ridge and Forestale. We were still paying debt on the high school. So we, we had a lot of debt. And so, by 20, by 2002, the percentage of our debt versus our total tax levy, which, you know, we're allowed to raise, it was 12%, 12% of our levy was going towards debt. Today, for the year we're in now, it's under 4%. You can see, if you see my cursor, you can see there were those, for lack of a better word, the years that we didn't really fund a lot of capital. And I think we paid the price by having to build certain things that we did. But you also have to remember during that period, the economy wasn't that great. And I think there were, you know, decisions were properly made about what to ask the voters for and what not to. This little chart at the bottom, which I think is telling, it shows you as our total levy, like, again, back in 2002, over 12% of our levy was going towards debt, meaning big capital projects. And today, it's under 4%. I know we've talked about the next big project we need to do is the DPW reconstruction and a new fire substation for the downtown area located at the DPW facility. We've shared a little bit about the rough numbers. We'll be getting a lot more details in the next month or two, and we can look at all this. But just thought it would be interesting because a lot of times, people talk about debt and don't understand like how it relates to your total budget. And one of the most important things is the bond rating agencies in the country that look at municipal debt, they want to make sure that you're sort of paying it forward by taking care of your buildings, replacing old ones when needed, and addressing those things. So it's actually seen as a positive thing, you know, when you look at debt compared to, you know, as a percentage of our total budget. So this next one, I think, is something that seems to get talked about constantly, and that's what's the average tax bill? So since 1995, so this is 30 years' worth of data, Sandwich has been, if there's a negative number on the far right, it means we were below the state average. So I think for those 30 years, there might be five or six where we were above the state average, never by more than $50, it looks like. We were always below it. And we've been below it for several years. And so I just thought it's worth understanding because what's hard is when you look at Cape Cod towns that demographically aren't that similar to us. And I would say likewise, we're not similar to Metro West towns either because they spend so much money. Like, I bet you their average bills are well over $15,000 a year. But I just thought that was interesting because a lot gets talked about. But when you look at the total state numbers, it sort of shed some light on things. And I could show you a few other things, but I don't know. Those, those three or four issues came up at several Finance Committee meetings, and I just thought, you know, it's worth taking a look. And I'll just end with some of our simplest slides. And that's, you know, and this is in the budget presentation, but I'm just going to try to fit this so it fits on the screen. Yeah, so if you look at like where our money comes from, you know, roughly 75% comes from taxes, 11% comes from state aid, 6% from local receipts, which is the, you know, the amount people pay to get their motor vehicle excise bills, if they want to get a building permit. And then, 5% comes from surplus revenue, which is free cash. So that's sort of like what's been left over from the prior year. But then when you factor it into all of our different categories about, you know, where does, where does the money go? When you factor in, roughly 62 cents goes for our educational-related costs, and that includes Upper Cape Tech, our tuition assessments from other public schools, including public charter schools. 32% goes to the general government expenses, 2% for general costs that really can't be categorized either way. And again, just under 4% goes for debt. So it's, I don't know, it's sort of interesting when you sort of take a step back and look at a bigger, from a bigger picture. And I could, again, I could get into more issues, but I think that's a pretty good, simple overview that touches on some of the items that came up during our budget process that the Finance Committee undertook.
If you would, in your presentation format, if you could explain again to the folks at home what the excess levy reserve is?
Yeah, so, and while I'm, while I'm talking, I'm going to try to do, well, I'm chewing gum too, so I'm going to try to do three things at once. Let me just pull up, I just want to find it because it was a question that came up at the Finance Committee that I thought was pretty interesting. So we already talked about the capital things, but I'll pull, this is the average tax bills on Cape Cod. I can talk about that if you want. But this is what I was looking for because I think this is really interesting. So, an excess levy capacity is every town has a maximum amount that it can charge voters based on what people have previously approved and the state law about only being able to increase your levy by 2.5% plus new growth. Generally, for Sandwich and very round numbers, our new growth has equated to about 1% over the years. So if you add the two together, our overall ability to raise taxes goes up by about 3.5% a year on average. So for several years now, all stemming back to when the power plant was built, until then, we, the additional, the new unit was built at the power plant. Until then, we were basically spending right to the hilt because we had to. So we really had no excess levy reserve. When the power plant was built, more taxes came in and payments from them, and most importantly, the value that that piece of equipment and machinery added to the town's overall value. We were, we've been very careful about trying not to use that for recurring costs. So what's been proposed for next year's budget is we're proposing not to touch at least $3.1 million in money that would only take a town meeting vote to access and spend. What I think's interesting about this chart is it shows all 15 of the Cape Cod towns. On the right-hand side is excess levy capacity, but you can see Sandwich is at 3.7, which is 3.7 million, which is what it was certified at the end of, I think it was last November. The average across the Cape is 700,000, which equates to less than 1% of the total budget, whereas ours equates to about 3.6% of our total budget. So we have more money set aside not being used. And that's sort of how we've had to roll because of how we cut things so close to the bone for decades. That's sort of how we were able to build up a safety net. Other towns do it different ways. So what's next to it is the free cash certification for those towns. So I'll just pick two that are closest to us. Like, Bourne had a free cash certification of over $11 million. Ours was 4.2. Related to Bourne's budget, that was almost 13% of their budget. But that means they've been charging people for money that they haven't had to spend, or they've been underestimating their receipt so much it came in. If I, if we did that in Sandwich, most likely people If I, if we did that in Sandwich, most likely people would come to our meetings and say, "Why are you taxing us so much when you're not using it?" So, when you look at our free cash number, which is $6 million below the Cape average, and the vast majority of Cape towns are way smaller than us, it's only 4.2% of our overall budget. If you look at Mashpee, you know, they have a total free cash certification of 14.7 million, and they still have, it's over 17% of their budget. So, I mean, it's pretty amazing how different towns do things. And the Finance Committee did bring up, which we're going to look at, is we're probably more similar to what happens off Cape, but it's sort of both those numbers, the excess levy capacity and the free cash, show you how closely we budget, you know, what we think we're going to bring in versus our actuals. For example, I'm not saying towns do this, but we don't pad our health insurance number by $2 million, because no one's going to know what we actually spend in health insurance until the end of the year. We don't do that. I may or may not know towns that do that, you know, and that's $2 million that'll roll back to their free cash next year. So, it's just, I'm not saying what we do is the best way, because there's many years I would, we would love to have more free cash or more flexibility on doing things, but it sort of shows you, in my opinion, like, we've been trained for so long to cut it so close. We were, we've been so cautious about spending that power plant new growth money, which is a good thing. You know, that's set up that buffer. And you think about it, we bought 100 Route 6A with cash, and we fixed it with cash. We funded the library improvements, which were awesome, and we built a whole new center for active living, all within our levy capacity, which normally, I mean, that's like sank or sank, you don't do that. But we've done it that way. And my big fear is our excess levy reserve would, like, drop to nothing again, and then we're letting, you know, we're cutting back on services just to pay the capital cost. But we've been really good about not touching that. And I feel like what's been proposed for next year's budget still retains at least $3 million, and we're trying to fund some significant improvements in DPW so people's roads could be improved over time. Granted, it's going to take a long time to catch up, but I think it's for a really important cause, and as Patrick rightfully says, it's the most expensive public asset that we own, the roads. If you had to build all of our roads from scratch, way, way, way more expensive than all of our school and town buildings combined. So, there's a lot of things, I think, that makes Sandwich unique, and I'm talking just budgets. And there's, you know, there's reasons why, because it's a combination of that's how we've always done things, combined with when an opportunity presented itself, so there was a significant growth in economic development, we've been really cautious on how we've used that money, which is, I think, a good thing, because otherwise, we wouldn't have much safety net.
Understood. Thank you very much. Any other questions for Bud? Okay, so, motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Mr. George, second by Mr. Hockter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. All business. Do and finalize annual town meeting warrant for May 5th, 2025.
So, the warrant as it looked on Tuesday, and I haven't made any changes since then, was the separate handout that I had. I'll give you a little bit of backup, because I know it was somewhat cryptic when I sent out the agenda packets on Tuesday. The Planning Board had a meeting Tuesday night, and they wanted to talk a little bit about that concept of the accessory dwelling unit language that's proposed in the zoning language that's already in our packet. Mirrors what the governor and the state adopted to basically be state law, but it requires a vote with the town. So, the language that's proposed under Article 18, like, matches what the state law wants us to do. And if I had to paraphrase one of the most important parts, it limits, people can buy right at an accessory dwelling unit at their house, if it's allowed in their subdivision, meaning with covenants and other things, up to 900 square feet by right. What I think there was a question about from at least one person in town is could they do greater than 900 square feet? And in our current language, it allows certain sizes, but a lot of that was going to be struck to match the new state law. And so, I think what the Planning Board thought, rather than, you know, quickly come up with a new article that addressed that question, they would like to work on it through the summer, work with that individual and others, and then come back with, you know, a properly crafted article that could be presented at a future town meeting that might allow, for example, I'm just making this up, might allow for 1,200 square feet, depending on the size of the lot. And if anything was more than the 900 square feet that's allowed by right, it would probably require a special permit from the ZBA. I think that's some of the things that they've roughly talked about, based on my discussions with Community Development Director LeAnn Drake. So, I think, you know, more to follow on that, but I think the bottom line was they felt it was too rushed and too reactive to one or two comments that they heard to try some wholesale change. And I think there's serious concern about, for example, on a half-acre lot that already has a house, to do an accessory dwelling unit with 1,400 square feet, you don't have any lawn to mow after that. I mean, that's, that takes up a lot of space. And I think it would change, you know, it would change a lot of things. So, I believe the Planning Board wants to spend more time to try to craft things better, and they're not adverse to coming back with something. They just want to schedule it and structure it the right way.
Okay, and the square footage, that's living space?
I believe so, yes.
How I understand it as well?
Yeah, and including, my understanding is living space includes, like, hallways, bathrooms, et cetera. Everything else on the warrant is the same that we had talked about in prior weeks. I did include in the full packet, if you wanted to take a motion, just to say, "These are the articles," and that they could be amended by any comments we get back from Town Council. We could either do that, or I could easily put this on your agenda for next week, and I sent the full warrant to John Giorgio to review, I think, on Monday. So, I would definitely think by next Thursday, I'll have any comments back. And you can look at the more or less final version, and I can have you sign it next Thursday, if that's easier. Does that sound good?
It sounds good to me. Anybody else? I think that's the way to go.
One other thing before I forget, so, next Monday and Tuesday, I'm out of the office. Heather's been at some training this week and is back Monday. In talking with Charlie, we didn't want to, like, panic and not get the agenda out, so we're actually going to get the agenda for next week out tomorrow. And so, when you see in the packet, it's probably going to be the exact same warrant that we just had in front of you. If it changes by Thursday, I'll bring those with me. And we have a limited number of items on the agenda next week.
We have had agreement. So, did we, yes, we did, I'm sorry, move to close the public hearing. I'm all right. New business. Cape Cod Commission Representative Recommendation: Reappoint Woody Mitchell through July 1st, Good evening, Mr. Mitchell.
Hello, sir. How are you?
Well enough, thank you. How are you tonight?
I'm excellent, thank you.
Glad to hear it.
I am actually looking to be reappointed for two months. You're all probably familiar with the situation here. I've asked to step down off the commission, and talking to Kristi, being Chair of the Commission, would like for me to stay on until the end of my term as Chair, which will expire on January, I mean, sorry, do that all the time, July 1st, and then step off the commission. Already presented a letter to Bud, already given a letter to Kristi. Kristi still thinks I'm going to back out at the last minute, and she keeps asking me to do so. But I've served as Chair now for a considerable amount of time. I've served, I took over for Joanne O'Keefe, who was the Commissioner before me. I took over in, like, in 2013. So, I've been here for a while. I've enjoyed serving on the commission. Before that, I was, we started the pedestrian and bike committee in town, and I've served on the ZBA for years. So, just ready to sit back and enjoy a little time with the grandkids and, you know, see how that happens and see how that works. But I appreciate all of your support throughout the years, and the previous Board of Selectment members reappointing me. And at this time, I would just ask if you could appoint me for the two months and allow me to finish out the chairmanship, and then I will step away. And then, of course, you have a new member that's ready to take over.
Out of respect for Mr. Mitchell, I'd like to handle these separately. So, have a motion?
Yep. Make a motion to move to reappoint Harold Woody Mitchell as the Sandwich Cape Cod Commission Representative from 4/3, 2025 through 6/30, 2025.
Motion by Mr. George, second by Mr. Hockter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and it's enthusiastic. Aye.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it, and appreciate all the support through the years.
I don't think people realize how much time Woody has had to spend, and as you guys know from when you've all served as Chair or Vice Chair, like, whoever's in my type of seat or Kristi's seat, for lack of a better word, bothers the Chair a lot to run things by. And I know he's, you know, he's been on the Executive Committee there, they have separate Executive Committee meetings, they have their regular meetings. As you know, sometimes, depending on the type of project that's before the commission, it can be very controversial, they go into a ton of detail, extremely long hours, like, I don't think, I don't think it's easy to find someone who wants to effectively serve as a commission rep because of how much time and the sort of high level of what they review takes. And like, Woody's background on the ZBA was, like, perfect to go with, you know, what's happened, so. And I know, you know, Kristi and Aaron and the rest of the people at the commission constantly say we're very lucky, Sandwich is very lucky to have, you know, someone like that represent us.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Patrick.
Well, I think I served on the JTC about, almost all but one or two years when you've been on the commission. And whenever there was an issue that needed the strength of the commissioners, as opposed to a subcommittee, you always rose to the top. And I really want everyone to realize how important that is in terms of, there's a lot, not a lot of understanding about the role of the county, particularly in transportation planning, and how significant that is. I really want to thank you for taking the ball and running with it.
Thank you.
Can I say one more thing, and this is really stupid? I'm going to preface it. Woody's probably going to hate me for saying this, but like, so there was one year, there was a project, I'll never forget, the public hearing for the subcommittee was up at the Jan Sebastian Drive Building. So, Frank Penorphy was the Chair of the Select Board, Woody was the representative from the commission, and I was the town manager. And so, we had, the three of us wanted to make a statement and a presentation to the committee. And when you think about our first names, like Frank, Woody, and Bud, I'm like, we're like the backup bears for the Country Bear Jamboree at Walt Disney. And I don't think anyone had a clue what I was talking about, but I thought it was really funny.
I agree. Thank you, gentlemen. You know something, Woody?
Yes, sir. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, Matt Schimmel for a three-year term at the Cape Cod Commission. We have a letter from Mr. Schimmel in our packet. Anybody have any questions or concerns?
I would just add that, knowing Woody's background and how much time he's spent, like, when we talked with the commission about, like, them wanting to have Woody stay on for two more months, they just said if we could, you know, reach out to people, like, from existing regulatory boards who or have had experience in land use issues, who would have time or interest in professional background to possibly devote. And so, I know LeAnn reached out to a few different people, and Matt was very interested. And for those who don't know, he was on the Economic Initiative Committee for several Corporation for several years in town. He was on our, and still is on our Sandwich Historical Commission, and is also the Chair of the Community Preservation Committee. So, fit a lot of the, you know, checked a lot of the boxes. And if you look at his professional background, where he works doing high-level, you know, government oversight and fiscal transparency, it seemed like it would be a good fit, and thankfully, and I know Woody's offered to sort of help get him up to speed. And the commission, which I included in your packet, has a really good summary of what's expected of their representatives. So, he was aware of that and knows the time that's needed for it, so. And he was busy tonight and couldn't come, so.
I saw that letter. It speaks a lot about the time involved. Is there any feedback from the commission as to our selection?
They just asked us if they could, you know, first have the background? Sorry, they just asked us if a person had that type of background? We shared what Matt's background was, and they sounded very, you know, pleased to have someone with that level of, you know, prior volunteer work to join them.
Anybody else have any particular thoughts about it?
Make a motion to appoint Matthew Schimmel as the Sandwich Cape Cod Commission Representative from 7/1, 2025 through 4/24, 2028.
Second.
4/30, right?
4/30?
Yeah.
I got the new, yeah, that was. Yeah, the new, okay, 4/30, 2028.
You know what? I think this, this motion actually came from the commission with the right dates, 4/24, yeah. It's a weird schedule.
Second.
Motion by Mr. George, second by Mr. Hockter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Schimmel. We'll meet you in this context soon, I hope. Other matters not reasonably anticipated by the Chair. I have none. Anybody else? Opportunity for public comment? Closing remarks. Just a couple of quick ones. I'd just like to remind the public that the Sandwich Middle High School performance of the musical "Hayes Town" opens tomorrow, and they have other performances on April 5th, Saturday, and then those are both 7:00 PM. There's a matinee on Sunday, the 6th, and two other performances at 7:00 on April 12th and April 11th. Yes, say it backwards, Charlie, but April 11th and April 12th. Encourage you to check it out. And then, please maintain the conditions in Eastern Europe, the Middle East, the overall threats to world peace, and all those affected by natural emergencies, and our thoughts and prayers. Motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Mr. George, second by Mr. Hockter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Our next meeting is next Thursday, April 10th, 2025, at 7:00 PM here in Historic Town Hall. Have a good evening, everyone. Thank you. Have a good evening, everyone. Thank you.